I call this meeting to order. This is the Regular School Board Meeting of the Northfield Public Schools. It is Tuesday, November 12th, 2013. Dr. Richardson, there were a couple of things in our table file.
Couple of things in the table file. First of all, the presentations for the Northfield Middle School and Community Services, Continuous Improvement Plan presentations are included as far as the PowerPoints. We also have an item for individual action that's been added on the table file that it will be an agreement for independent contractor services. And then we also have several personnel items, terms of appointments, increases, decreases, changes in assignment, and resignations.
Very good. If there's no objection, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. All right. We are ready to move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. Is there anyone here who is here to address the board? All right. We will move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets the minutes from the last school board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No.
Moved by Julie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. All right. An announcements and recognition.
Okay, I have several this evening. First of all, hopefully several board members had an opportunity to catch the story on CARE-11 that was done on the book that was written by Earl Weinman Scope students called "Our Story: A Guide to the History of Northfield." The reporter interviewed high school students involved in the writing of the book, and also visited Rich Gugusberg's third grade class at Sibley, recorded portions of the lesson, also had an opportunity to speak with Earl. And that segment aired on 6:00 PM News on Wednesday, the 30th of October. I believe we also set a link so that people could get a chance to see it later. Again, I think just a very, very positive story in terms of the ability of our students to really go above and beyond to create this, actually a textbook or a history book for students in the third grade. Also, on October 27th and 28th, 55 of our Northfield High School DECA students attended the Fall Leadership Conference in downtown Minneapolis. In addition to hearing two keynote speakers focusing on professionalism, motivation, leadership, students attended breakout sessions to learn more about DECA and competition, how to be a future business and DECA leader, and how to prepare for college. The conference also offered a college fair. Students came with many practical ideas to positively influence their futures. And as you remember, Julie Woolner is our DECA advisor. Also, the Northfield High School Concert Choir was invited to be the solo choir at the St. Olaf Coral Day Festival on Sunday, November 3rd. The choir participated in all-day event and mass choir rehearsals. That evening, the choir performed a solo set in addition to participating in the mass choir performance. The public is invited to a reception for the Raider volleyball player Anna Fefferley tomorrow, November 13th, at 4:00 PM in the high school upper cafeteria. Anna will be signing a national letter of intent to attend the University of Colorado in a full scholarship, so congratulations to Anna. Also, and I think, I know I saw Ann at the Veterans' Day celebration at Bridgewater. I was able to be there also. Again, Nancy and her staff and all of the students involved just do a wonderful job of celebrating the sacrifices of our veterans. And I would say there were probably at least 40 or 50 veterans there, many of them in uniform, or in American Legion, or Veterans of Foreign War, Regalia. So, it's, I think, a really very positive piece for the community. I think helps our kids to really see the spirit behind the celebration of the day. So, again, I think a very, very positive event. Those are the announcements I have.
All right. Board members, other announcements and recognition. Ann?
I just want to commend the High School Theater Department for their amazing production of "You're in Town." Despite the naming, it's a fabulous show with a very important message. I believe it's running again this weekend, and I refer to people to go. It's beautifully performed. The voices of those students are amazing, and the dancing, the whole thing is great.
So, it's Friday and Saturday night at 7:30, and then there's a matinee show on Sunday at 2:00, and tickets are on sale at the high school. Anyone else? Great. All right. We will move on to our first item, which is the Continuous Improvement Plan. And who has drawn the short straw? Is it the middle school? All right, great. So, Mr. Pashta will lead us.
First of all, Superintendent Richardson and members of the school board, we appreciate this opportunity to share with you our Site Improvement Plan presentation today. I'll do some introductions in a moment, but I do want to clarify that I believe this is the seventh presentation that I've made. You've probably all seen all of the suits from my Johnny Carson collection that I have. So, we decided to wear something different to follow up on the spirit of the national conference that our middle school staff was able to attend this past week. So, we'll start out with a picture, I guess, if you do this a few years in a row, you start to collect pictures of snow on the sign on the monument in front of the school. So, this is from last year, and usually we're doing this presentation in November or December, so it's that first snowfall we take the picture. Any guesses on which month this was from last year?
May.
May, good guess. April 19th. The one before the last one in May, so a little bit of a different twist on it. So, we'll get started here. This is our 2012-2013 report and our plan for this year. And these are our Site Improvement Team members that worked on our plan either last year or this year, or both. And I have two students with me because one of our activities as our Site Improvement Team last year was we decided it's been enough years since we kind of got our Site Improvement Team reorganized, and we have a good, efficient operation, and that's a good time to start bringing in some student membership. So, I actually selected two seventh graders, invited them to join as eighth graders this year. I'd like to introduce you to those people. To my left here is Jorge Salinas Jr. as an eighth grader, and also Madison Hintz. She goes by Maddie at school, but because she's up here in front of you today, she's going to be Madison. She was also an eighth grader at Northfield Middle School. So, they're going to help with the presentation today. And we also have some other supporters here that are members of our Site Improvement Team or parents. We appreciate them being here as well. So, with all the reports you're seeing this fall, we have two items that we tried to tackle, our goals for achievement and for the school climate.
Our mission is that we are dedicated to a caring and challenging environment that inspires self-directed learning, fuels curiosity, and encourages academic excellence. The Site Improvement Team reviewed and approved this as still relevant.
And after they approved, continuing on with that same mission, they wanted to shorten it down to something that everyone could remember and that would actually drive our decision-making each day. So, we came up with a new slogan, and it is "Preparing for Success in a Dynamic World." And you can see this goldfish taking a bit of a risk there. And we thought that was appropriate for this year because it came a time last spring where we had to decide if the middle school was going to go on board with the one-to-one iPad initiative. And that was quite a risk because there was a lot of research, but there were certainly a lot of unknowns, especially at the middle level. We were very confident the high school should go for it, but finally we had the, our technology team made the recommendation that we would go as well, and it's been, as interesting as that picture looks there too, but definitely worthwhile. And an example of that would be old meets new. We see Jean-Claude O'Neill, the Voyager there, dressed in his Minnesota history attire, but the students are using their own iPads, and there's the smart board he's using in the background. So, you kind of see how it all comes together in this brave new world that we're working in. And our results from last year, and our results from last week.
This is a picture of the Honors Choir, the Northfield Middle School Honors Choir, taken at the National Conference in Minneapolis. And we did a 50's themed musical thing, and we did, we wore poodle skirts and all the boys dressed up and slicked back their hair. It was really fun.
So, I think some people were starting to call it the Training Program for Rock and Roll Revival. It was also interesting because there were quite a few parents there, and as conference attendees were shifting between the sessions and things like that and very busy, it was amazing how this group, especially with their costumes and their dialogue, were able to pull people in and get them to stop and listen. And I noticed quite a few people there videotaping this group that had no connection to Northfield. They just thought it was so amazing, they wanted to bring it back to share with their schools when they returned back home, so that was pretty neat. So, here are our results.
We will demonstrate increased proficiency for each student in the essential learning of content areas as measured by either passing rates or common assessments selected by professional learning communities. These will be measured by June 5th, 2013. And this option provides a direct connection between the work of PLCs and site goals.
So, you'll notice this will be in the high school presentation as well, and this has enabled our staff, depending on their content area or specialty, to really set their SMART goals specific to what they do as professionals. And we won't go through all those right now. We're going to, with this included in our annual report, how we post the results of the SMART, the SMART goal results, the work of the PLCs on the district website, and reflect back on those. And there is one that we'd like to highlight.
One PLC aligned with our climate objectives and recorded a 90% student and 86% satisfaction rating of their efforts to create a welcoming learning environment.
And so, that's something that these students remember coming into sixth grade, and obviously people know that's been a big emphasis of ours to welcome the students in and have an effective transition to sixth grade. And we'll be talking a little bit today about some plans to further improve the transition to ninth grade. And the work of the PLCs obviously gets reflected in a lot of different state data, and we have some new forms of state data that we get to look at these days. But once again, I pulled my old Anchor logo back out again because there are some changes in the state test. There's a little bit of an echo there. The math test was a little bit different this year. The previous year, we were able to take the test for record three times, and we worked through all the students, and then we're able to work specifically with students who hadn't passed it. That was a strategic move on our part that worked very effectively. This year, or this past year, students were allowed to take two practice tests, but they didn't count for record, so they just had one shot at the test. And that impacted results statewide. So, it's hard to look and compare two different cohorts with two different approaches to the test. So, the Anchor comes back in, what do our tests mean? Let's always go back and look at the rest of the state because they had the same situation, and we come out looking fairly, fairly good compared to the rest of the state, as you can see. And the same is true in reading. The reading test was a bit of a surprise because it was the MCA3, a different version of the reading test, that teachers had to prepare for without knowing much about the test. And so, our students, once again, although the overall scores across the state were lower because it was a different version of the test, we did very well compared to the rest of the state. And also keep in mind that sixth grade is last year that we teach reading, and so it's no surprise that that was the area where our staff excelled the most. And then into some newer measurements, and the state, the MDE website has all kinds of wonderful charts and graphs and colors and everything, but they don't translate very well to a slide that you're seeing from before. So, I tried to break it down a little bit and just look back a couple of years. The multiple measurement ratings over the past two years, you see the increase that we made there. The focus rating, once again, I know Dr. Richardson and Dr. Jenny tried to explain what this all means. Tough to break down, but looks good that we're going in the right direction anyway. And then the MMR is actually made of those three scores below, and it's a little bit interesting there because Northfield, for a long time, has done very well in their proficiency rating, almost a perfect proficiency score. Growth has certainly been on the rise, and that's probably one of the most important, if not the most important. And the achievement gap reduction is a curious one. We are working our way up, yet if you look at those three scores, the, of those three scores, the one I think we're making the most, the best strides in, and the one I'm most proud of is the achievement gap reduction, yet there's really only one way to get a high score, and that's not to have any diversity, which is, you know, it's an interesting, a curious measurement of a gap that doesn't exist in your school, which is why you get a high score. So, when we look at this, I just want to point out a few things. Our composite proficiency in the same span has averaged out over that span to the 37th highest rating middle school, 212 in the state. Our Latino students have averaged in the 17th place over that span in their proficiency rating, although not all schools have enough of a Latino population to qualify. And when we talk about tackling the achievement gap, it's really unique in Northfield. We need to also discern if we're talking about an assimilation gap or an achievement gap. And it may not be ethical, relevant, or effective if they're mistakenly identified. And I've been working on a little project on assimilation, which I hope to share with you sometime in the near future. So, once again, that's, that is the score that appears to need the most work, but it's actually the one that I'm most proud of in what we have accomplished. And we have people come and visit us and learn about what we're doing, but you can't necessarily tell it from that score. This score is a little bit more easier to follow, and of course, a few years back, some of our schools were very concerned about demographic sales, that we're not making adequate yearly progress under "No Child Left Behind," and you can see the trend there. So, obviously, the achievement gap is being closed in many ways through the work of the students and their talented staff. We'll go on to our second achievement goal from last year.
We will provide increased opportunities for students to apply oral communication skills to include expanding student-led conferences to both sixth and seventh grade by April 2013. And our class of 2018 cohort experienced their second spring of student-led conferences. This was the, kind of got cut off.
All right. So, what we were talking about there, and this is an interesting one, the reason Jorge picked this one is they're part of the sixth grade cohort, were the first ones to do student-led conferences. In fact, Jorge was one of the volunteers to help us film a video to demonstrate to the teachers how the student-led conferences were supposed to work so they could host them. And I was actually the host for Maddie's sixth grade conference with her parents. And as you can see by them being up here, this is part of creating those oral communication skills opportunities. It seemed like a good idea when they agreed to do this, but their feet were a little cold by this afternoon, and doing a fine job so far. All right. So, you know, part of the connectedness with the parents is, was also working on the fall parent conferences, even though we stayed with the walk-in model. And we could see some data here about how our fall conferences have increased in attendance. Do you have some comments about that?
In 2009, we started counting the number of students represented by one or more adults as opposed. And the reason I come to conferences is because I want to see what my mom is interesting, interested in, learning about what I do in school and what the teachers have to say about it. And, yeah, that's kind of why I come to conferences.
So, as opposed to just counting people walking in the door, we're counting the students that were actually represented by one or more parents. And you can see the biggest jump was in 2012, and that's when we started inviting the students to come along with their parents, as Jorge explained. He always comes with them. And Maddie does too. And another part of our parent connection and our welcoming environment, some stats that I think are rather interesting. This year, we pushed our Web Orientation Day attendance all the way up to 97%. It had been averaging 95%, and so even, and that continues to be a resounding success. Sixth grade student-led conferences for the second year in a row had a 99% participation rate. Last year, the first year for seventh grade was 92%. And we did have a few parents who said they were okay with student-led conferences, it was different, they were okay with it, they also wanted to connect with some more of the teachers. And so, this year, we've added an opportunity for them after the student-led conference to check in with, with the teachers. You see, last year was the final year for the eighth grade walk-in conferences, as they will be moving to a student-led conference. And it's not hard to see that with all the information available to parents, the attraction to the walking conferences in the spring is not as the same as it, as it has been in the fall, and continues to be in the fall. So, now we move to our climate goals from last year. And if you've been on the board for a little while, you recognize this. We're in the fifth, we were in the fifth year last year of a six-year plan to reduce the school-wide disciplinary referral level. And also, we began last year to look at actually teaching and acknowledging the pro-social skills. And the whole foundation behind this is if you're not in class, you can't learn. And that's what we've done, and we've taken the time to do it systematically over the years, and will provide some evidence that that indeed is doing what it's supposed to. So, last year, the goal was just to maintain at a level below the baseline year when we started to implement this and started to phase it in. We wanted to maintain 50% below the baseline. Last year, actually came in 72% below. All three grades were phased in in the 2011-2012 school year. So, every student now has had a chance to be oriented as a sixth grader and progress through the school. Last year, we had the largest ever cohort of sixth graders, 349, if they set the record for the fewest number of bottom-line referrals for an entire year with only 32. And a bottom-line referral means there's a consequence in the handbook for you. There's, there's nothing you can do to help make things better. It's still a learning experience, but it was a violation of the handbook, and, but when you actually do the math on that, that turns out to be a nice ratio. And we put together a PBIS team that was trained by MBE, Minnesota Department of Education. We'll talk more about PBS in a moment, so that's, some schools use PBIS to restore the learning environment. As you can see from the data that we're showing, that the learning environment is where it needs to be, and now we're looking at PBIS as hanging some ornaments on this tree that we've established there and moving forward with that. So, the baseline year, the first year that we started to implement this was actually 2009, but going back to the first year we started talking about this, we have seen an 80% reduction in discipline referrals. Those are students who would be down in the office waiting for somebody to come and help them with something, missing class, starting a cycle, but they aren't now because they have other options to take care of those below-the-line type issues that are going to happen in middle school. What I should point out, we actually went up a few last year, and that was actually with the eighth grade. And you'll notice that uptick is a little bit related to the fact that we're really moving into that response to intervention model, where if a student needs a behavioral intervention to move them down that progression, we actually went, go out of our way to make sure that we're recording this and using referrals and things like that. So, we want to make sure that we have an accurate representation of who really needed those interventions. And I've actually moved away from sixth grade where I was implementing this program as the primary administrator for five years, to eighth grade this year, because the sixth grade teachers have implemented everything from developmental design to following along with this philosophy and working with fix-it plans and those type of things, that they're operating pretty much on their own with this. They're that effective right now, which is exactly what we intended to do. All right. So, we have another climate goal, which was to apply for National Green Ribbon Schools' recognition. We talked about that before, and it's really about the process and not actually hoping to be one of the two schools in the state that's selected. It's about making a better learning environment and climate. And what we found out last year was when I was getting ready to do the application, which was probably a weekend project, it turned into a different application that came out at the last minute, which was several month-long project. And so, we had to back up and prepare this task force together. We have a coordinator that's actually tied to the environmental ed day trips. So, Amy Allen is actually running an environmental club that has students, some other staff volunteers, and some high school students that are going to be the ones that actually go through the process of setting up the meetings and prepare this. And we know that, once again, the application is changing this year, so it's really a long-term process. It's not so much about actually trying to get that award, but how much better of a school will you get if we go through the steps of doing that? So, you'll see that pop up again. All right. And then we're on to our plan for next year. And you see some teachers that are planning, wearing similar attire. These are people planning their conference sessions, math teachers, and a Spanish teacher there figuring out where they're going to go at the conference here. So, that was a really great experience for us. And I noticed the Northfield News has an article on that already in their online version. So, once again, our achievement goal is going to be the same with the PLCs picking their SMART goals, and PLCs do get noticed. Here are some PLC members who have worked with English learners or co-teaching, meeting with former Congressman Tim Penny, and members from MINCAN who came to learn about what we're doing with, why we're being successful with students in those two areas. And so, a lot of success comes from the PLC time that those teachers have been able to invest in there. And on to our second SMART goal for achievement for this year, which will ring true once again.
We will provide increased opportunities for students to apply oral communication skills to include expanding student-led conferences to all three, three grades by February 24th, 2014. Sixth and seventh grade will utilize student portfolios, and eighth grade will focus on high school transition. So, that means that sixth and seventh graders are going to talk about what's happening in school, and eighth graders are kind of trying to move on to high school.
And the action plan for that goal is we're actually working with the high school to hold our eighth grade student-led conferences here at the high school in classroom two. Our eighth grade staff will host it, but it'll be here at the high school, and it'll be a little bit later than the sixth and seventh, the date for the sixth and seventh grade. Their portfolio will be interpreting the explore test data for their parents, and also preparing for ninth grade registration with their parents. There'll be a kind of an open house environment where representatives, faculty from the various electives and departments will be there to not only, to follow up before and after with parents who have questions about what courses should they be taking, what is the math pathway? How will this tie into whatever career pathways there are? And once again, for the second year, we'll be using family access so that parents can schedule their appointments directly through that. That was very efficient last year. And then we have the dates when the sixth and seventh grade will be hosting their student-led And our climate goal is the final year of this six-year plan. Once again, we want to maintain that level below 50% of the baseline in the first year of its implementation. And we'll set a new site goal. This organization, our Site Improvement Team, will set a new site goal next year for how we're going to fully implement positive behavior interventions and supports. So, we wanted to make sure we got to what does PBIS stand for? And it is, you know, one of the sides of the RTI triangle that you've seen before, so this is our formally moving into that stage, and we certainly think we have the foundation ready for that. And we talked about continuing on with the process of the Green Ribbon Schools' application to continue on with that. We have a new climate goal this year that our Site Improvement Team put a lot of discussion into.
We will establish a symbolic partner-school relationship with Reyes Secondary School in Maltrata, Veracruz, Mexico, to promote language and cultural exchange between the staff and students of both schools with academic contacts by June 30th, 2014. And this means that the kids are studying a different language, maybe specifically Spanish. Those, they'll, they'll be more hands-on with kids who actually speak Spanish daily and are from a Spanish-speaking school. And we, we don't really know yet what we're going to do, about pen pals or chat, and the point is we're trying to make it so that we get to interact with those kids.
So, as you can see from the goal, our intent is to line up those activities by June 30th, 2014, so by the end of the school year, so we know what we'll be doing. And here are just some photos that are kind of a collage there to show you. Let's get referred to a little side project I've been doing. I spent 23 days, the last two summers, down in Maltrata. And one of the reasons is that data is not super reliable, but it appears from the data that I collected, about 80% of our students that would be categorized as Hispanic and a federal identification are actually from this community, Maltrata and Veracruz, or the surrounding satellite villages and towns around that. And so, that means a lot of our students are from there, and we're finding out that students go back and forth, over the past 10 years, they've gone back and forth between the school system there and back. This is Pico de Orozaba, which is the tallest, highest volcano in all of North America, 19,000, almost 19,000 feet. It's just 12 miles to the west of this mountain valley, which is where Maltrata is. It's nestled in the mountain valley at about 5,700 feet in elevation, so a little higher than Denver might be. And here's a sign from outside the school. Here's me meeting with the director there at the school and talking about opportunities. This is a youngster from Northfield Middle School here on the left that's related to me, who ran into one of his classmates down there this summer, and we actually ran into a whole handful of students who are now going down to spend the summers with their family down in Maltrata. And last year, the secondary school was equipped with internet and one computer lab last year, so we needed them to get internet to facilitate this communication. So, this year, we'll work on actually lining up some opportunities So this year, we'll work on actually lining up some opportunities for exchange now that they do have the internet, even with limited access. And we also have students who not only visit down there, but as we said, go back and forth. So I, I found, had many of these, you know, type photo opportunities with students who were former students of mine who are going down there now, or students who started up in Northfield and then have moved back and are full-time students down in Mexico. And a little bit interesting here is as you move into the, the schools that are up in the mountainside there, you'll find that in kindergarten and first grade, the first thing that teachers do is teach them Spanish as a second language. So I understand that particularly with some of our parents in the community that came from this area, they actually learned an indigenous language first and then learned Spanish in school and then came to the United States and are trying to learn English. So a little bit more complicated than just an achievement gap.
We will continue to support the parent communication, lunchtime experience, and classroom sound distribution systems, systems goals that were first set five years ago.
All right, and this one, we just owed you to come back and explain this one. You might remember last year, after many years of trying to get the funding to put some sound absorption panels in our cafeteria as part of the plan that, the goal that Matty just explained. So last year, you know, we brought out the heavy artillery and we showed you exactly how loud it was in the cafeteria. In fact, if anybody was exposed to the level of sound that was bouncing around in there for prolonged exposure, they would have hearing loss. But OSHA said that because it wasn't just a thirty-minute blast a day, that, that they wouldn't support safety money being used for this. So out of the, the district capital for last year, we did have sound absorption panels installed this past summer, and we did spread out students over four lunch periods. We still have the sixth graders together, so that's two hundred ninety-six students still in one bigger lunch group, but the other three are very nice and very comfortable. And you can see with these two steps, we went down from the sound of a train whistle in eighty-two to ninety-four decibels range to now in the September, over many days of collecting data, I have a range of seventy-four to eighty-two. You can be, rest assured that the eighty-two is the sixth graders. But still, it's quieter than city traffic and a little bit louder than conversation level. So we've come a long way. Our staff and our students, thank you for supporting us in that. And we'd like to thank anybody that provided support with photos and data for this. And we'll close with another thank you photo and open it up if there are any questions that you'd like to ask our student representatives or myself about our presentation. Thank you for your attention.
Board members, question? Gary?
I don't really have a question, but I want to thank you for the presentation. And Mike is on.
Okay. So I don't really have a question, but I want to thank you for an excellent presentation. And I am so excited about the relationship with the school in Maltrata. It would be wonderful if you could, you know, bring students back sometime to the board and do a fuller presentation on what's going on with that because I'm very excited about that.
Thank you. Be happy to share.
You have to be preparing to do that, aren't you, as you finish up another little activity you're working on?
You'll have more reading information than you ever bargained for.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Julie?
Really exciting stuff. This is such a fun presentation. And thank you too for coming. You guys did a wonderful job. I had a couple of questions. My first one was about it related to the school climate goal. And I understand that, I love the issue of pro-social skills. And I see here that you're still developing the campaign, but do you have any idea what that might look like?
And that was the goal for last year, was to start focusing.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And so we're reporting back that that, we wanted to start to sunset that goal about just promoting a good quality environment where the students stay in class. And then we wanted to actually take a more active step in, okay, now we've got things nice and stable, so what can we do to actually promote that? So we began looking at that, and that's when we started exploring and talking with, with Mary Hansen and other people about the support that we could get for PBIS. And, and we really looked it over for quite a while because we didn't feel like we were a recovery project that often PBIS is used for, but we could start to see that that could be the vehicle for teaching the pro-social skills, making sure that it isn't just assumed that students know what they are and that when they're, when they're achieving and demonstrating at those levels, that there is recognition of it too, to keep it sustained. So, you know, I, there are multiple things that we do on a smaller scale last year that I could explain to you, but the more formal thing is we have a PBIS team that now is coming up with various promotional materials for around the school and recognition systems, different things to make sure that's clearly demonstrated in their classroom. Some of the things that I've done the past few years with sixth grade is, is I would have separate incentives for them when I work with them in the line at, at the lunchroom or find them doing things around the school. We'd have various competitions. Do you want to talk about the, anybody want to say anything about the race that I won against everybody or the, the referral challenge? You have to tell the truth.
Okay.
Reflect back on sixth grade.
Okay, okay. Well, sixth grade and we were doing a ice cream dash and it was, I'm not sure if it was the last day, but it was one of the last days. And because we got the referral challenge, we won. And Mr. Pesch, though, he raced us around the track. And he, if he, if he won, then he would get ice cream. But if any of us won, we would get, each get ice cream for lunch. And I know Mr. Pesch is pretty athletic, but he, he did not win. So we got ice cream that day.
They figured out how they could use three hundred students to block me on the track. Worked very effectively and I don't have cash with me right now, but I will. So it's just fun things like that was, you know, recognizing when they were doing things that were pro-social or demonstrating maturity. And now it'll be a lot more organized this year because we're shifting from, and you see this is the final year of kind of like a maintenance goal at this point and moving on to this, this enhanced structure on top of that. Is that answering your question?
Yes, no, that's wonderful.
Because other than, it was just kind of broad to go on for a while, so.
And I just wanted to make a comment about your very intentional use of the explore test data. I think that's a really, really good, good stuff to take with that. As, as a parent who's kind of seen a student take the explorer and then follow all the way through high school, I see that that is a really, really important test and it, it does measure some good data and it's, it's a wonderful opportunity to begin planning right at ninth grade with those results in hand.
And I will give credit to our student support staff, to the counselors who for a couple of years have been saying, you know, the state of Minnesota is actually giving us something very useful here. This is so rare, can we please, please use it? And we don't have the time built in our day, we don't have an advisor or anything to really dig into that. What class do we take it out of? And so when we saw the eighth grade transition with the student-led conferences coming in, it kind of, this perfect merging of all these elements came together and it is, I think it's the ideal time to look at that.
Yeah, I, I really commend you for that. I think it's a really wonderful thing that you're going to do with that.
And it will tie in perfectly to the world's best workforce, which is going to require us to do something before students leave eighth grade to really take a look at the explore test and see about how that points us toward potentially additional classes that a student needs to take or possible careers that the student might be interested in and the courses that may be needed to be successful in that career area.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Well, I have one comment too. First, Matty and Jorge, thank you for being here and presenting. And it was really helpful to hear your voice about the student-led conferences. What I was going to say is that Rob and I were at a presentation today where Zach Pruitt was talking about Northfield Promise. And he has this, one of his slides is how Northfield Promise is going to take all these lines that are going like this and line everything up. And the data team was so excited, you know, after I talked to Jeff and Zach had talked to Jeff about where student-led conferences are going and the eighth grade and thinking about careers. And it seems to me that, looking at the middle school, that's one area where Northfield Promise doesn't have to look at all the lines going like this. You're already starting to, I mean, all the things that are already lining up and making so much sense and, and having the middle school and the high school start to, to think about that together is just terrific. So like Julie, I'm really excited about that. And it was nice to have the students here to, to talk about the student-led conferences too. So thank you. All right, thanks so much. All right, we are ready for the Community Services with Erin Mayberry. And board members, I'll remind you that in your table file, you had PowerPoints for that presentation as well.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Sarah Line, our early childhood coordinator is also here tonight to join me in the presentation of our progress on our objectives from last year and then our site improvement plan for this upcoming year. We want to start with just letting you know that today is actually National Community Ed Day. So Northfield Public Schools and the Community Services Division is certainly proud to celebrate this day. National Community Ed Day became, became an annual celebration in the country for, has been an annual celebration in the country for twenty-seven years. And it is a day that shines the spotlight on lifelong, community-based learning and the tireless work that is done by community educators to assure that communities maximize the benefits, benefits of collaboration and teamwork. So it was very fortunate that we were also able to give our presentation today. We just would like to start with a reminder that our mission is, of community services, community services is to support the learning and participation of adults and children in our community through citizen involvement, access to schools and community resources, and promotion of collaboration and partnerships. We had three goals, or excuse me, three objectives last year, and they were in the, in the areas of collective impact, early childhood, and the ventures program. Before reviewing the goals that we have for this year, we're just going to reflect on the progress we made on last year's objectives. Objective one last year was to support the development of collective, of the collective impact initiative in the community that will focus on supporting all Northfield youth from cradle to career. And I do know that many of you at this table are very familiar with collective impact. So I don't think I need to go in depth about kind of what that effort is, but as you can see, we've had some pretty big highlights from the last year in the collective impact area. That we have met with at this point now over fifty community groups, which has now topped the four hundred and fifty people number in an effort to explain collective impact and gather thoughts on benchmarks. And as most of you know, those conversations resulted in over two hundred and fifty benchmarks, which have now been kind of clustered and worked down to ten that we are still kind of finalizing language on a few with the Council of Champions, but certainly gave us a good opportunity to, to meet with several groups in the community and really get some in-depth thoughts on what, how the, how to guide the collective impact initiative. We also had four members of our staff attend the mentoring partnership of Minnesota Conference last year, and that entire conference was focused on collective impact. So it was a great opportunity last October, a year ago now, this past October, to really kind of start the engine and the discussions about collective impact and how it's our department as a vehicle for the school district to really move us forward. And then we've also informed school leaders about the collective impact initiative. And both Dr. Richardson and Ellen are serving on the Council of Champions, so we have certainly found a place at that table. And then we've also implemented some cradle-to-career enhancements in program areas in the Community Services Division. For example, the Summer Plus Program developed and implemented five positive psychology sessions focused on finding strengths for middle school youth. This reached approximately thirty middle school youth considered at risk for either academic failure or dropping out of school. We also have the Gems Club, which is girls exploring math and science, which is actually what is pictured here. They have held sessions at each elementary school in the last year. And Gems has been focusing on promoting math, science, and engineering concepts to girls between the ages of seven and ten. And we have also now expanded this where to some schools, we are now able to have some dollars that have been found for, to provide scholarships for girls to attend. And so we've been using teachers in those schools to help identify girls typically in the fourth or fifth grade range that would then also benefit from the Gems program. Good evening. Objective two has to do with early childhood programs. And we worked on implementing changes to the Community Services Division so that all, by two thousand twenty, all Minnesota children will be school-ready. And the first thing that we did was just do some restructuring. And so I ended up taking over coordinating all early childhood programs, which not only frees up resources, but also just brings those programs together so that we can work on supporting families together through the programs and really as a community. So, and then the highlights of some of the progress that we've made, we had a very sizable grant from Smith that allowed us to do outreach, more outreach in our community with ECFE. And so that we were able to develop programs at Jefferson Square. We do a luncheon learning there, similar to the one that's at the Greenville Place Apartments. We've had drop-in classes, parent ed classes at Greenville School, and drop-in and extra classes at the Community Resource Center and have served fifty-two families. And what I want to say about that is that really my goal, and that's our goal in this, is to respond to our families' needs and meet them where, where they are. And so if they're uncomfortable coming in at first, then we need to go to them and build that relationship. And we are doing that and seeing that then they are joining in other ECFE programs. And, and so I can't say enough about just the importance of that relationship that then lasts. And, and then we also had special events and we had huge success with that. And I would say it's because of collaboration, we work with other programs in the community, Head Start, you know, just other programs. And, and I think for some families, it works to have maybe a little bit less of a commitment to start. And so maybe it's a one-time event and we're focused on literacy, or we've done science nights where they just get to get messy and things like that to build those skills and put some parent education in there, but it's really fun for the whole family. And kind of tied to that, then, we really focused some efforts on bringing parent education out into the community. In some of our drop-in classes, we have a dual-licensed parent educator, early childhood educator, and she leads them, so she's there. And it's a little bit more informal and a little bit different than our traditional ECFE classes. And I say that because, again, we're trying to respond to the families of this community and, you know, the same thing doesn't work for every family. And so really, she has seen just fabulous, she emailed me last Friday, I was out, and she said, "We had ten families at drop-in." And so we're seeing these new families who bring their, you know, friends and bring their family, and then, like I said, they come to other programming. So sometimes it would just be having a special guest. We've had our liaison officer talk about Halloween safety or bike safety, or one of our parent educators will, will talk about something. We've tried to add a variety just to reach, you know, the different interests, the different ages, that sort of thing. We've done nutrition, movement, just kind of trying different things. And now it will be kind of responding to where did we reach the most families and how can we continue this even without the grant, which is really important. And then in our objective three, it had to do with our Ventures childcare sites, which you know is a six weeks to six years childcare. And it was really looking at, looking at assessment models for that continuous improvement. And that's really exciting that we're looking at such a quality program. And somewhat tied to that is that they did review this continuous improvement process for after-school plan and decided that due to the expense and the involvement of the coaches coming from out of state, it maybe wasn't the best fit for the program. But they did go through, along with the school readiness program, the parent aware and became four-star rated, which is really exciting to see that, you know, they, they are doing quality work and they want to continue doing quality work all the way through. So with that, that brings us to our site improvement plan for this current year. All three of our objectives, actually from last year, were all continuing, continuing objectives that would now be in their second year. One thing that we have decided to do is that our first two objectives, which was around collective impact and then having all kindergartners or incoming students ready for kindergarten by two thousand twenty, are kind of now meeting. Early, the Early Childhood Initiative Coalition is actually
The Early Childhood Initiative Coalition is actually the first action team that has been formed for collective impact with the whole goal around having kids ready for kindergarten. And so we really found that it didn't make sense anymore to have these two as separate objectives because we're really trying to tie their work together, and that's the whole point of collective impact. So we will be continuing with both of those goals, kind of under what will now be Objective One, which will be to support the Northfield Promise, which is the Collective Impact Initiative in the community that will focus on supporting all Northfield youth from cradle to career. And I think that will really continue to cover us very well from those first two objectives. Our second objective, then, will be to successfully implement security enhancements at the Northfield Community Resource Center and within Community Services Division's programs. As you know, our programs are kind of spread, well, we have programs that take place in every building in the school district, but we have heavy concentration of programs, both at Longfellow with our Early Ventures and Hand-to-Hand Preschool, and then also in the Northfield Community Resource Center with our Adult Basic Education Programs, our Early Childhood Family Education Programs, and then the Office of Community Services as well. So the division is really going to work to align kind of the security measures at the Northfield Community Resource Center with what is taking place throughout the district, and so really kind of working to have some things in place for those programs that are at the Northfield Community Resource Center and then ones that we do have out in the community as well. And then our third objective is the continuation of the Ventures Childcare Sites and a continuous improvement model. And as you saw from Sarah, that we did review one last year that we didn't find to be the best fit for the Ventures Program. In the process, we did become four-star parent aware, and so now we're going to go back and just continue to find something that will help us to continue and to improve as we go forward.
So in closing, since it's National Community Education Day, we wanted to highlight some of the impacts made by Minnesota Community Education. It's efficient. It generates nearly six additional dollars in service for every dollar of state levy and aid. What a great investment. And it serves over 900,000 adults participating in adult basic education, early childhood parent education, adults with disabilities, and lifelong learning programs. Also, serving 1.7 million youth through youth development, youth service, school-age care, and general youth programming, and 285,000 children in early childhood programming. When we think about that, you know, 90% of their brain development happens then, and we're reaching 285,000 children in early childhood programming. So that's very exciting and definitely a reason to celebrate.
We also thought you might be interested in these next two slides, which are the results of a study on measurable impacts of community education on K-12, and you may have seen these in the past, but this study is actually based on survey results taken across the state of Minnesota, both in metropolitan areas and greater Minnesota school districts. And as you can see, community education program users rate the quality of education provided by their school district higher than non-community education users. And in fact, the majority of community education program users rate the quality of education in their school district as excellent. And one that probably applies to those that are sitting at this table is that community education program users also have more favorable impressions of both the Superintendent Administration and School Board than non-users. So in the case of the school districts...
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. In case of the school districts, Superintendent Administration, community education program users post an average increase of 9% in their favorable rating, and for school boards, the average increases 8%. And when you compare community education program users and non-users in every age group and household type, whether that be senior, empty nest, or parent, they all show increases. So before we take any questions, we would just like to point out that the pictures used throughout this presentation were all taken at programs within the last year, and many of these pictures will appear in our winter-spring brochure, which will be in your household in mid-December. And with that, we would take any questions.
Board members, questions are coming? Noel?
I think your outreach component is really, really successful, and congratulations. Thank you.
Kudos should really be given to Sarah and her staff. They have really, through the grant that they got through Smith, they have really used every single dollar to be able to go out and really bring...
Erin helped them, just in case anybody doesn't know what...
Sorry, the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, who gave us a grant of $19,000 for a year of outreach work.
Yeah, and I would say it's definitely a team effort. We've got staff that is just as passionate about it as I am, and so it's exciting to them and really just seeing the changes in the families that we're serving, so.
I was gonna say, I think I would also frame that as you look at what they are working with with early childhood education, it is going to fit in perfectly, not only with the collective impact piece, but it also fits in perfectly with World's Best Workforce because it is the key initial component of kindergarten readiness, and all the pieces that we have been massaging and working on over the years and expanding are going to be pieces that are going to fit in directly as we're being measured in terms of our performance, in terms of having students ready for kindergarten.
Board members, anything?
I have one thing, I guess, I was gonna, two things actually, that I was gonna congratulate you on. I know that Anne, Noel, and I sat in the audit meeting the other day, and we'll hear more about that at an upcoming board meeting, but having been on the board for the last five years, what Community Services, and Erin, you've been a big part of it, and Hannah, before you have done, in terms of being stewards of the resources, is, you know, you see it in the audit report, and then you get to hear the stories behind it here, and it's just fabulous. And the other thing I was going to mention was, I was at a workshop done in Iowa last week, and the speaker from Iowa State was talking, he was a chair, and he's from the Latino community, an engineer, and he was talking about how in less than 30 years, the Hispanic population will be a majority population in our country. And I was thinking, Sarah, about the role that you've had this year in outreach that you've played, and how those, the babies that are being born right now are going to be our workforce, and it is just phenomenal to think about the steps that you're taking now and how that's really going to set us up for the future that we need. So thank you for all that work. So, Noel?
I want to make a comment in the last two presentations, this one and one ahead of it, that the, part of the presentation that got our attention is that which involves outreach, one into Mexico and one into the community. It's very good. Good to see that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Board members, we are ready to move on to items for individual action. We have a second one added, but our first item is the American Education Week Proclamation. So Board members, you can see in the memorandum that we are looking at the upcoming American Education Week, and in recognition for that, we have the Retired Educators Lunch coming up on November 18th, which is just next Monday at the NCRC, and we have the Staff Appreciation Breakfast, as always, on November 27th, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And those are two really nice activities and ways to recognize our current staff and educators, as well as the retired educators who contribute so much to the community. So I will, I guess, touch on what the American Education Proclamation is, "Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, equality; and whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for access to a productive future; and whereas education employees, be they custodians, teachers, bus drivers, librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children in communities with care and professionalism; whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators, volunteers, business leaders, elected officials, and common enterprise." So we are recognizing the Northfield Board's School Board of Education proclaiming November 18th through the 22nd as the 92nd Annual Observation of American Education Week. So I would ask for a motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation. Moved by Carrie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Rob. All those, oh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item for individual action was added in your table file, and that is an agreement for independent contractor services. Dr. Richardson, do you want to...
I will just do an overview, and then obviously I have the big guns here in case you have specific questions. As we look at moving forward, we have a situation right now where the current individual that has been part of our staff that has worked with MA billing is leaving her position in the office, which is the main office of the Longfellow School, and is going to be going upstairs to the ALC. And with that, and then with the reorganization of the remaining staff, we really believe that it was an opportunity for us to think about where's the best place to get the MA billing services done. And at that point, Cheryl had shared with us that Faribault Public Schools is contracting currently with Teresa Rome, who does their medical assistance billing. Her expertise is in that area, that's all she does. And as you might imagine, just like anything else that moves through the federal government, there's a lot in terms of the level of expertise that an individual has really has an impact on the amount of dollars that we actually generate from MA billing. And so she had recommended to us at this time that since the current person in our system was no longer going to be there and was going to be moving up, that we move away from trying to provide that service in-house and look at providing as a contracted service. The other thing that is very clear there is that gives us the opportunity for Cheryl to have basically a single touch point for both districts in terms of MA book billing because Faribault is also doing exactly the same thing. So at this point, that's why we'd like to recommend looking at this piece. And again, as we shared with you, you know, we'll watch this over the course of the year. We'll take a look at the exact costing in terms of this particular proposal and the amount of revenue that is generated in MA billing. And if at some point we decide this is not the direction to go, we can always come back and adjust that. But at this point, we really do believe that in the end, that even though the cost in terms of the contracted service is slightly higher than our current persons doing it in-house, we think that we'll actually get better results in terms of the amount of revenue that will be generated through MA billing because of the skill level and expertise of the individual involved. So Cheryl or Matt, do you want to add anything to that?
First, I'd like to just thank Mary Huberg, who was the secretary that was heading up our MA billing. She did an excellent job, and we've met with Teresa Rome to kind of go through that process of what we've had in place, and she was very impressed with the work and the organization that Mary had put in place. Mary simply did not have the time available to really dedicate to it, being the front person at the Longfellow office. So I commend her, though, for the work that she has done. And like Chris said, I believe that this will bring in more revenue for us. Teresa will take this year, that's why it's an hourly rate right now, she'll take this year to kind of figure out what is our capacity for increasing that revenue, and then she would move that to a flat rate for the year based on our revenue mountain, based on the projections that she would have for that.
So Board members, before we, if we have questions, I'd rather have a motion and a second on the table. So is there a motion to support the Superintendent's recommendations for the medical assistance and agreement with independent contractor services? Moved by Julie. Seconded by Anne. Questions? Carrie?
Cheryl, does Faribault have a flat rate with her now?
Yes, we do.
And how long has Faribault been using her?
She was in place before I got there, so I believe she's been there at least five years, and we have more than doubled our revenue during that time.
With similar students?
The student population in Faribault is different, and so that's why it's hard to really understand at this point without her getting to know the district, what our capacity is for increasing that revenue. We do have more students that are in our low-enceance population with more multiply-severely-disabled students in Faribault, and also our free and reduced population in Faribault is greater than here in Northfield, which both impact our ability to capture some of those dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve the medical assistance billing contractor as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Ready to move on to the consent grouping? I'll remind Board members that we're a few additional personnel items, appointments, increase, decrease, and resignation. Anything anyone wishes to pull from the consent grouping? All those in favor of approving, oh, ask for a motion to approve the consent grouping. Going too fast. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Seconded by Anne. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for information, Board members, you had in your packets enrollment report and enrollment options report. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, sure. And again, our enrollment report is, continues to trend as it realistically has for almost the last decade. Very similar numbers. We're looking at a grand total as of 11, one of 3,886 students. We've been between 3,800 and 3,900 students for the last decade or more. And as you can see, as you look at numbers, we are looking, I think, at elementary classrooms that are very reasonably sized. I think the largest classrooms we see are at the fifth grade level at 30, but most of our classrooms are in the 20 to 25 range in terms of sizing. And basically, we've, with the large seventh grade moving through the middle school, we're still sitting at, again, above 900 students at the middle school and over 1,200 students at high school level. The other piece that we wanted to share with you, and again, this will actually get incorporated into the work session as we work with this on the 21st, is some data around open enrollment, non-resident student transfers in and out, and also looking specifically at where students are going in terms of going to non-public schools, homeschool, et cetera. I think that, you know, the key piece that we look at here in terms of kind of the overview is that we have about 281 students coming into our system from other school districts. That's up slightly from where it was last year, 278. We have about 755 Northfield students that are attending school districts elsewhere, 193 that are going to other publics, 268 that are going to charters, and specifically and mainly to our two charters that are here in our own community. Homeschool at 109, which is actually down a little bit as this charter, and non-public schools at 185. And as you can see, last year, we had 838 outbound students. This year, we're at 755. When we talk about and work with the presentation, looking at issues around enrollment and facilities going forward, you're going to get a packet like this, I hope, by the end of this week, which will break all of that data down and graph it out for you so you can actually take a look at what's been the enrollment in each school over the years. It'll take a look at information about the percentages of students of various racial backgrounds across each building. It'll take a look at how kids have moved across the system in terms of intra-district transfer, how kids have moved in through non-resident agreements or through open enrollments, and also what's happening with individual groups. And we also tried to do something where we took a look at some of those, that data by, again, by racial makeup, so we can actually look at who are the students that are leaving and where are they going. So that'll be part of this one document, which will be basically a document that really will kind of give you background data information. The other part that will be part of the presentation next time will be a document that looks at, from a narrative perspective, the issues that we're facing as we think about facilities and as we think about enrollments going forward. And what we hope to do with that session is to give you a chance to really explore in detail the data and ask additional... in detail the data and ask additional questions that you might have, and also to begin to think about what kind of short-term solutions we need to take a look at to not only address making sure that we have enough classrooms as we move into all-day, everyday kindergarten for all kids, but also what do we need to think about in terms of not only the diversity of our community and diversity of our student population, but thinking about how do we make sure that we're addressing that as we're addressing the needs to balance enrollment and the needs to think about, are there other facilities, things that are going to need to be done as we move forward into the future? So, I want to get this information out, and kind of the target at this point is probably Friday, and with the idea, then, that you'd have it over the weekend and through next Thursday to be able to get it all booked over. Then, for the presentation on the 21st, we'll spend about an hour kind of going through and giving you kind of the detailed information, then asking the board to spend an hour talking about what they've heard, finding out what other questions you have, and also thinking about your sense about some of these short-term pieces that we may need to look at, because we do know we're gonna need to have additional kindergarten classroom space, but we also know that as we think about going forward, we really don't have good data about the future in terms of what's happening to our community. And the last time we did a demographic study was, I think, probably at least 15 years ago.
2003.
Well, it was when they did the middle school, that one that was done, before the middle school. And so, we know that that data is dated, and it was looking at, at that point, a continuing trajectory upward in terms of the size of the community and the growth of our community. And we know things have shifted as we have the new economy, but we also know that we are probably at a point where we need to come back and take a look at all of our buildings and think about what's their position for the next 10 to 20 years, and really thinking about, do we have everything that we need to do in that end? And I think we're in a good place because of our stewardship of our funding and the stewardship of our budgets over the years, we have the dollars to be able to do those two studies before we go forward. So, those will be the kinds of things that'll there, and again, I will be providing you some data on that. The other thing we'll take a look at is a little bit about achievement data, because I think there obviously are some ongoing questions about how are various buildings performing, and I think that to really look at it in a more objective way, it has to be sliced and diced so that you really look at if we look at exactly the same students from building to building, how are they performing? And I know Rob sent me a note saying that he'd done some digging into the, kind of, the MDE website, and part of the problem with the MDE website is it only lets you use one variable to check the measurements on. And when you do that, there are typically, in our district, three or four different variables that are having an impact, and so you can't really get an accurate number. And I think we'll be able to, through the help of Roger, to be able to have some more specific data even on those pieces. So, again, I think that our enrollment report, overall, you know, the piece that we're sitting is actually a reduction in the number of kids leaving the system, but we still see a significant number of kids going to charter schools, going to homeschool, going to non-public schools as we go forward, and I think that the reality is, is we look at the fact that funding is driven by the, not the resident pupils anymore, but by the average daily membership, the students that actually go to school here, starting next year. We really need to be very cognizant of that as we think about how do we really make plans for the future? And I'd like to put us in a position where we really have a long-range plan for looking at facilities and enrollment, and looking about how do we make sure that we have a good way to balance enrollments, but also not end up with a real mismatch in terms of the diversity across the various buildings? So, that's, I guess that is teaser number two...
Right.
...in terms of the next meeting, but we will try to have all of these materials out to you Friday, so you'll have them to look over. And, you know, again, please feel free, if once you get a chance to look at that material, if you got questions, it's generally in advance, don't hesitate to shoot those questions back, and we'll try to gather other data, you know, before we actually have the meeting on Thursday. On the other hand, if the best way for you to learn is just to hear it all, and then toss those questions at us on the 21st, we're very happy to have you do that, too. Okay, thank you.
All right. So, speaking of that, future meetings, I want to remind board members that Thursday, November 21st at 7:00 is our work session. I would like to thank all board members, it's nice that we can get us on the date when everybody is really busy to squeeze in, because I think this is gonna be an important work session and really allow the district to do some intentional and long-range planning. And then, our next board meetings, which are November 25th and the first one in December, December 9th. So, with that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment. Moved by Noel. Seconded by Carrie. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and you adjourned.